Sometimes I just see things. I actually thought I saw it in the dark before, but.
There it is.
For its information only.
That's the provision.
Okay, okay.
Got to remember to bring my dabble. I haven't swung the old dabble in quite some time and miss it.
Doesn't sound as.
This is how I swing it.
The classic.
This doesn't quite sound.
You know, little piece of wood. I actually have two.
Okay, well, we will, we'll call the city council of April 2nd, regular meeting order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Colley.
Here.
Councilor Penner.
Here.
Councilor Medina.
Here.
Councilor Pestejo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Kaya Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Harris.
Here.
Mayor Yoko Forman.
Thank you, Hector. All right, item number two is additions and corrections to the agenda. Anybody? Being done, we're going to move on to item number three, which is recognitions, proclamations, or community announcements. Anything? Any community announcements from staffs?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've got, we've got coming up this Saturday, the Arbor Day Celebration at Chuck Roberts Park, starting at nine and done by, by noon for sure. I think plans to have pizza there a little bit before noon. And on April 19th, there's a Bear Creek-Stewards cleanup at Lynn Newbury Park, 9:00 AM to noon. And their sign up is required, and that's through www.stream-smart.com backslash bears bear dash creek dash clean dash ups. And on May 3rd is has a household hazardous waste event by recollection event by Leucology at Rogue Transfer Station, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. There's more information at leucology.com backslash ecology dash Ashland. That we also have a one important city notice, weed abatement season begins on May 15th. There'll be notices going out in the April water bill. And a few additional community notices. The Talent Garden Club meeting on April 5th, Zet Talent Library from 9:00 to 11:30 with guest speaker Robin McKenzie on Saving the Western Monarch. On April 10th, both Mayor and I will be participating in the SOU Small Business Development Center prosperity project event, which is really describing what's going on with the year investments and and opportunities for local businesses and contractors and to participate. That's 9:30 to 2:30 at the Phoenix Civic Center. Then I would welcome the mayor to correct me. I believe the April 25th has been set as the next art walk, or is that still?
Yes.
Not finally.
Five to seven, five to seven.
Five to 7:00 PM in downtown town. So and then once again, I'll mention the ADU workshop on July 12th. That's accessory dwelling unit workshop at the Phoenix Civic Center. And sign up is through jccltrg.org. And then a couple of regular announcements. The garden worker bees are seeking volunteers to help maintain pollinator gardens Mondays from 10:00 to noon. There's a Facebook group, Talent Garden Club. And Rogue Food Unites continues to look for volunteers to assist at Thursday, Neighbors Unite Farmers Market in Talent, and their website is roguefoodunites.org backslash volunteer dash opportunities.
Thank you. Yep, just a plug for that ADU workshop. I've taken it. It's very, very good, really good. Okay, moving on to public.
Yep, really quick. I think that the community had a meeting to decide on a community wide yard sale date.
Oh, yeah.
November. Wow.
No.
Not November, May 17th and 18th, I think is what they came up with. I don't know where November came.
Glad to see that coming back to our community. That's a fun day. All right. The next item on the agenda is public testimony. Do I have any speaker request forms?
On your next to your computer.
It's on my computer.
Next to you. I printed it out. Jennifer Hillhart.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, so is Jennifer, Jennifer's not here. Is she online?
She's online.
Okay. So Jennifer, if you will, when we put you on the mic, if you'll state your name and your city for the record, please.
Yes, of course. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Hillhart, H I L L hyphen H A R T. I live in Portland, Oregon. I am the Policy and Program Director of the Oregon Citizens Utility Board. We are a statewide utility consumer advocacy organization representing utility ratepayers from for-profit utilities. And to for the past 40 years, we have saved customers over $10 billion in utility rate increases. Should I just go into my testimony?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I thank you, Mayor, and City of Talent Council members. I just give introduction to myself. I wanted to just acknowledge and appreciate your consideration of supporting the Fair Energy Act HB 3179. And that stands for fairness and affordability in residential energy. This is a bill that Cub and other partners like Verde, the Oregon Just Transition Alliance, and Community Energy Project have brought with the chief sponsor Nathan Sosa, who is the Chair of the House Commerce and Consumer Protection Committee. This bill is in direct response to the skyrocketing utility bills that I'm sure you folks have been hearing about from your constituents. You know, our three largest for-profit utilities, Northwest Natural, Portland General Electric, and Pacific Power have had rates increased by nearly 50% for some, but over 50% for some since December 2021. We have brought this bill to address energy affordability, and I can summarize in three ways. The first one is centering the customer in ratemaking. Right now, we feel the system is unbalanced in the favor of utility investors. There isn't explicit, there is not currently explicit language in the law that states that utilities must consider the impact of their rate increases on their customers and the residential customers in particular. So we're changing that with this law by requiring them every time they come in for one of their big general rate increases, requiring them to do this analysis on the economic impact to customers. So that would include specifically like the cost of living or the rate of disconnections and you know, overdue bills, what that is looking like for their customers on the ground, help give that equal weight at a minimum to shareholders return on investments. This includes a moratorium on winter rate increases. All the good record disconnections this 2024 directly related to winter rate increases, and we think that needs to change. Another piece of this centering the customer goes to, we've included a provision for multi-year plans to help address the utilities coming from coming in for back-to-back rate increases every year. This would set it up where utilities would be on a schedule. They can only come in every three years for this big general rate increase. And it would help ensure that we don't have rate increases, these big general rate increases every 12 months. It would create an open public process for folks to determine what that looks like. And importantly, it also provides for creating incentive mechanisms for cost recovery, for example, like greater investment energy efficiency, reducing disconnections, rather than just incentivizing them to spend money so they can make more money on their capital investments. The second piece is related to low-cost financing. So we're trying to find ways currently utilities, the for-profit utilities can ask to be able to use low-cost bonding mechanisms, also called securitization for emergencies. So like if there's a big ice storm, they can come in quickly and get access to financing at a lower rate, so we don't have to be subject to possible capolital market. We'd like to see that expanded to some of these large capital investments customers utilities need to make in order to meet infrastructure upgrades and potentially in order to meet their clean energy goals. So we've created this, opened up this low-cost financing option for them. What that means is that the utilities wouldn't get, it's not the typical utility investment strategy where the shareholders would get a return on that investment, rather we would go through this public bonding process. And the third piece would provide for transparency in rates. So it would provide for at a minimum annual reporting on what rate increases are expected for that year. And then by and with those by customer class, who's paying for what, how much their rates are expected to increase, and then we would have this breakdown of what exactly those rate increases are going to by cost category. So is it going to transmission upgrades? Is it going to energy efficiency and those kinds of things? So that way it would be published on utilities website for customers to be able to see, but also filed with the utility commission. Thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions or have any follow-up at another time if you wish.
Is there any questions? Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't read the the agenda. She, this was a speaker request for agenda item 12.1. All right, thank you, Jill. I love this new public testimony all in one spot. I'm gonna, but I'm gonna have to make sure that I let you all know from the request that it's an agenda item or not agenda item. I apologize. But it's been pretty good working this this new layout for sure. All right, the next item on the agenda is special presentations. 5.1 is a presentation by Rogue Valley Food Systems Network. Please come forward and state your names and city for the record and.
Thank you. My name's Allison Sexhauer.
My name is Sheila Foster.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Just go. Okay, great. Well, yeah, my, I guess my name's Allison Sexhauer. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you tonight with the Talent City Council. I'm the Executive Director of the Rogue Valley Food System Network. We're a nonprofit that's been working in the region for over 10 years in Jackson and Josephine County. We were formed out of the last time Jackson and Josephine County did a community food assessment. So in 2012, 2013, we did a community food assessment. Here with me is Sheila Foster. She's our Economic Development Advisor, working with the Rogue Valley Food System Network. We exist to foster connections, to promote equitable food systems, food access ecologically and ecologically sound agricultural practices and economic vitality. And we are here today to share with you the updated 2025 release of the Rogue Valley Community Food Assessment and Action Plan, hot off the presses.
Yes, so the Rogue Valley Community Food Assessment is the result of three years of research into the current state of our food system. Did this, did we go forward? I don't know what you guys are seeing next slide.
What pictures?
It has the picture with the table content. Great. So we're all on the same page. As many of you know, the production, distribution, processing, serving, and ultimately the disposal of food forms a significant portion and even the foundation of our local economy. The reality is, however, as we discovered in the assessment, only 2% of the food grown in the region is purchased here. This represents a tremendous opportunity for communities like Talent to keep local dollars circulating and build resiliency by working together to increase the purchasing of locally produced food. One of the wonderful aspects of the Rogue Valley is our vibrant agricultural community. Our hope in sharing this report is to give you insights into some of the challenges and the opportunities facing our community, so you can plan for the future. And you are able to have as much information as possible to support a thriving local economy. Ultimately, we would like to count the City of Talent as a partner in developing a thriving food and farm economy. And to that end, we would love to see the City of Talent. Next slide, please. Sign on to a proclamation declaring your support of our local food system. Over the next six months, we will be presenting to city governments throughout the Rogue Valley as well as county commissioners and others, and we would love to have the City of Talent be the first to sign the proclamation. Next slide. So why do a food assessment and what does it mean? Strong local food systems create resilient communities. And few communities know that as well as talent. In the wake of the Almeida fire, it was the infrastructure and the strength of the local food system that allowed Rogue Food Unites and other organizations to jump into action. It was the strength and dedication of many agricultural workers who live in Talent and Phoenix that allowed the Rogue Valley to have fresh food on the shelves at farmers markets and in food banks during the COVID-19 pandemic. The last food assessment for Jackson County, as Allison mentioned, was more than a decade ago, and it was not nearly as comprehensive, and Josephine County produced a separate report. In addition to the significant impact of the fires and COVID-19 pandemic, the region has been impacted by drought and water challenges. In the last 10 years, it's been impacted by the legalization of cannabis as well as changes in healthcare funding. A number of organizations have identified the need for coordinated effort in order to have a greater impact on the food system. And for all of these reasons, the Rogue Valley Food System Network commissioned a food assessment of Jackson and Josephine Counties together three years ago. I'll now pass it to Allison, who is going to tell you more about what we found.
And I'll tell you a little bit about the process of how we conducted this assessment. Really, it was three years ago that we started in building the council and the community that was going to come together to build the steering committee for the food assessment. Then we set to having listening sessions, one-on-one interviews, focus groups. We spent a lot of time going out to different community organizations and groups, sitting in on their meeting, listening and taking note of what their needs, what were the gaps in resources, and what were their dreams? What was, what would they do if they could wave a magic wand and have the food system of their dreams? So we did that for over three years. We also hired New Ventures Advisors, who is the national standard for conducting these food assessments, and they helped us really pull together the quantitative data. So we took the USDA Ag Cents. That's one of the reasons it took so long. We waited for the 2022 Ag Cents to come out. And as well as aggregating different economic feasibility and food hub feasibility reports from our neighborhood, neighbor regions. Additionally, we did a survey. We launched a community survey that had over 600 people fill it out, and then over 80 farmers and ranchers. Out of all of this work, four priority goals emerged. I'm going to base these around the needs, and then we'll say the specific goal, goals in form of working group. So we found no, these are, there are no surprises here, by the way, if you're tuned into food systems, that the local food and farm economy is thriving and it needs investment. So despite the increasing number of producers, we found a 50% increase in producers in the Rogue Valley compared to a 19% average across the state. The Rogue Valley has seen a 4%. At the same time, the Rogue Valley has seen a 4% decline in the number of acres in active agricultural production. This is over the last 10 years. The reasons for the decline are complex, ranging from water right to shifting market conditions. One result is that while there are more farmers in the region, they are working on smaller plots of land. So we found that 78% of the farms in the Rogue Valley are now under 50 acres. And more than, more than half of the farms are less than 14 acres. This shift to smaller farm size has several implications, one of being the need for smaller infrastructure suited to smaller scale production as well as a need to aggregate and have farmers connect and build networks so that they can scale their production to meet the demands of scale of economy and tap into larger market. Additionally, we found a large percentage of the current farmers in the Rogue Valley. Many of them are land-rich and cash poor and are nearing retiring age. So finding ways to retain agricultural land, what we have in production, while at the same time providing farmers with the funds they need and desire deserve to retire is a key issue that we'll be looking at over the next years. Here you see two graphs. So our community, you see that one on the left is the top crops, which is fascinating. Obviously, forage and hay are by far the largest. Some of that goes to food production in the form of feeding animals that we then consume. But most of the consumption you see on the far end of the table. So forage, grapes, and then pears. Our, our community, and then the one on the right is talking about our customer spending per household. And this is a fun one to think about when we think about the economic impact of food systems. Our community within nearly 130,000 households across Jackson and Josephine County, so about 92,000 in Jackson County, send an average of $8,183 per year on food with 5,400 of that spent on food consumed at home. Each household invests about $1,080 annually or $21 a week. So we like to get excited about this possibility. $21 a week, if every household in the Rogue Valley channeled this existing fruit and vegetable budget towards local product, it would generate over $2 million weekly and $137 million annually for our local economy. Even if households only shifted half of their produce spending to local sources, and this is only the vegetable and produce sources, we'd see nearly $50 million in annual local sales. Currently, agriculture stands as one of Jackson County's largest economic sectors. And we generate 105 million in total agriculture sales with fruit, fruit, tree nuts, and berry production contributing $53 million in 2022. And again, like Sheila mentioned, only 2% of that stays here is consumed by our local population. As I mentioned, the number of producers in the Rogue Valley has grown at twice the rate as the rest of Oregon, so 50% increase in producers with agricultural agricultural sales more than doubling in the last seven years. And the Rogue Valley experienced a tripling of value-added sales since 2017. So that's 20 million in 2017 to 71 million in 2022 compared to a slight decline in the rest of the state. So we've had a lot of business entrepreneurs, people who are doing value-added products. You can see the value-added product. That's anything that has goes from raw to shelf, even freeze-dried. A freeze-dried project, product is a value add. So we have this burgeoning agricultural economic viability, a lot of great producers doing great things. And this you are probably familiar with. This is the exclusive farm use. The dark green is exclusive farm use. The light one is high value. We have top talent right in there. A lot of EFU land, a lot of farmers here. According to the American Farmland Trust, Jackson County faces some of the highest pressures in the state with projections indicating the loss of approximately 13,700 acres of farmland to development by 2040. This underscores the urgent need for coordinated efforts among diverse stakeholders, including land use planners, local governments like yourselves, agricultural producers, conservation organizations, and community advocates to address the challenging challenges of protecting farmland while managing developmental pressures and ensuring the region's agricultural resilience. At the heart of the Rogue Valley's food economy are the farm workers, restaurant employees, truck drivers, and other labors who ensure the system's success. Among them are approximately 7,000 farm labors, including 3,700 migrant and seasonal workers. Median hourly wage for Oregon farm workers is $16 an hour with an average annual income of $29,000 for a family of four. Labor was reported as the top challenge for farmers across the board, both in the livestock industry and in the vegetable industry. And it was cited the barrier in business expansion, land acquisition, and farm business liability. We also found that the region lacks key specialized training programs. So we're talking, we have several programs for youth, not a lot in high school, and certainly not career-level agricultural training, although there are some exciting projects underway. Food insecurity and hunger persists. Jackson and Josephine County have some of the highest food insecurity rates of the state. Jackson County has a 17.1% food insecure rate in children and 11.5% when you include the whole community. The barriers stated include high costs of food costs, limited access in rural areas, areas, and transportation challenges. There's also a significant, what they call a SNAP gap. So 12% of Rogue Valley residents are eligible for SNAP and not enrolled for various reasons. Those are folks that could be accessing SNAP and then the subsequent double-up food bucks and protein bucks programs that are offered. The Rogue Valley faces significant environmental challenges affecting food production, including warming trends. On the current warming trend is that we would have temperatures mirroring California's Central Valley, so it might be growing lemons and albatros here at some point in the next few decades. And reduce water availability and increase wildfire risk. So despite these challenges, there's a strong community engagement with sustainability. 76% of the surveyed farmers already implemented some type of regenerative agriculture, so they're thinking about ecologically sound farming practices. And 76% of community members expressed concern about environmental impacts on the food system. I love the graph. It says 75% are like, I don't know, I need to know more about this thing. What are you talking about? So we also have a curious breed of farmers amongst us. And finally, the fourth kind of bucket is food waste. So food waste is a major issue across the state, according to the Oregon State Public Interest Research Group, who has a bill at the legislature on food waste right now. 1 million tons of food is wasted every year in Oregon. That's enough to fill garbage trucks lined up on the I-5 from Ashland to Portland three times over. At the same time, 19.3%, 19.3% and 17.1% of the children in Josephine and Jackson County respectively don't have enough food to eat. So you put those two pieces together. Of all the food waste generated, 71% could have been eaten. There's a distribution, a systems issue at play there. We do have some great composting, community composting projects underway, and there's a lot of room for innovative community-driven solutions. Department of Environmental Quality just put out their food systems strategy for the next decade, and it includes a significant weight on food waste. There's also going to be some funding coming down the lane. So we spent the last three years developing these goals, objectives, and actions out there in the community, listening, what are your needs? What are your dreams? And now we're at the point where we are moving into the food action plan. So we've, we've worked together to develop broad community support and are moving into a working group process.
So the next phase of the project is really moving into action. And as Allison pointed out, we're, what we're hoping to do is really work together and collectively have an impact as a community. A steering committee representing more than 20 local and statewide organizations and agencies collectively help to develop this, which is the action plan. And it's using the nearly 100 pages of data and information that's in the food assessment. The action plan contains four overarching goals. First is increasing access to healthy food. Second is investing in a food, a thriving food and farm economy. The third is protecting soil and water health, and the fourth is reducing food waste in other ways. All of those goals, four to five objectives were identified under each goal. And more than 100 action items were identified as needed to achieve a total, the total of 16 objectives. So a lot of work. This all came together on January 17th at the Food Solutions Summit, a gathering that included over 140 attendees representing more than 80 organizations, businesses, and also individuals. At the Food Solutions Summit, we identified which organizations were already tackling the action items that were listed and what projects are already underway. Since then, we've held two follow-up meetings with 60 to 70 people attending, and we are now starting to develop the four working groups, one for each goal area that will focus on the objectives and the action items. Rogue Valley Food System Network is serving as the backbone organization for this work, and we're doing that by supporting the coordination of the working groups, increasing resource sharing, identifying funding and development opportunities, developing communication tools, and developing collective metrics in order to measure the impact that we're having together in building a thriving food system here in the Rogue Valley. And as I mentioned earlier, we would love to see the City of Talent as a partner in this work. So if possible, we would like to request permission to submit a proclamation to the. So if possible, we would like to request permission to submit a proclamation to the City of Talent to review and bode on and sign at your next meeting.
And I think you all were able to, we got those out to you as PDFs as well.
Councilwoman Penomar.
Thank you so much. I've not seen a copy of the resolution and, or the proclamation and the packet.
We don't have it prepared. You're our first trial, so you're going to help us figure out how to do it. The last, in 2012, we had, they did a series of proclamations from several cities and commissioners. So we're a following suit on that, but.
I just, I also want to mention that this is an agenda item. So if the city does, we don't have to wait to other to talk about a proclamation. If we want to pursue that, we can, we can do it on the item here. I'd like to see us work, work through a proclamation.
If you want to see the language from the last one, we can send that to you, but we haven't sent it to you yet.
Is that the one that was in the slides?
Yeah.
Can we look at that real quick? Does anybody object to that? Take another minute to look at it. Yeah. If it's, if it's a hassle.
Hector, we're going to have it on slide three.
I disconnected your.
Okay. Well, if the, yeah, go ahead. Oh, can you just read it?
Yes. Yeah. Proclamation. Whereas the Rogue Valley has many attributes of a strong local food system. And whereas as a community, we still have work to do to ensure that everyone in our community has access to healthy food and that farms and food businesses can grow in our region. And whereas our community of individuals, businesses, organizations, agencies, and local government can do more when we work collaboratively. And whereas the City of Talent strives to support the wellbeing of our local farms, gardens, food businesses, and community members. And whereas the City of Talent supports the Rogue Valley Food System Network's mission and vision, which states, this has shifted in the last 10 years. The mission is that the Rogue Valley exists to foster connections to promote equitable food access, ecologically sound agricultural practices, and economic vitality. And we envision a visible and engaged food system for all residents in the Rogue Valley. Now therefore, I, Mayor Darby Airwood, Mayor of the City of Talent, do hereby proclaim to the City of Talent a partner of the Rogue Valley Food System Network in an effort to strengthen our community's food system as a whole.
Councilwoman Penomar.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So what does partnership imply? Is it just kind of a symbolic thing or does it imply something else?
This, this is a symbol, right? The proclamation as a whole, we're already partnering with a lot of organizations and people in the City of Talent to support the already growing food system collaborations that are happening here. In the wake of the Almeida fire, I think that there's been a renaissance and an opening up to food and farm. It's the foundation of the culture here. Working with Travel Southern Oregon and the agritourism work, working with some of our local business owners on thinking about what it looks like to have a greater food hub, somewhere that we can support the community and being able to gain entrepreneurial experience, the technical assistance needed. So there's, we're already working in those ways. I don't have an answer, but that's like the first thing that comes to mind is support. And we, the Rogue Valley Food System Network is, is all of you, really. If you eat, grow, or consume food or know someone who does in the Rogue Valley, you're a partner of this work. So I don't think we have an official, I think this can be a symbol and continue to lean into where you see the conversation that we heard earlier today around opening up a food, food access portal. Like let's work together to identify someone that can support or even identify resources that would support an organization to be in there. Because there's a lot of hungry people out there. So that's what the first thing that comes to mind. But we can have it official, I don't know if we need anything else officially at the moment.
No, it's mostly just to kind of present it in everybody's mind that this is a value that the city government holds. And so kind of touch them as you're making decisions.
Councilwoman Penomar.
So this kind of reminds me of the long-term recovery group. Different, but it's kind of like, you know, we are going to be a convenor. You know, it's kind of like, almost like an overlay of an already existing. But you know, I, I see some, some partners that certainly recognize and are doing great work. I'm curious about, so your organization, where, where does your funding come from?
It comes from a variety of sources, mostly foundations.
And then especially crop law grants. So we, we're, we're mostly grant funded and looking to shift that. We do have some community support. We have been a one-person staff for a really long time and are, have just kind of started to grow our capacity to address this huge body of work and support folks in a greater way. So.
The thing that, one of the things that makes this a little bit different is that collective impact, in order for all these organizations to work together, you need to have somebody, an entity that's kind of holding that. Because just coordinating the meetings, identifying the, the metrics that we want to be using to analyze whether or not we're having an impact. All of that takes work that everybody who's involved in this movement already has a full-time job, works for an organization like that. So the Food System Network is stepping into, it's actually been kind of doing this for the last decade, but it's really stepping into being that backbone organization that can coordinate the meetings or work to bring in experts to help identify how we're going to develop the metrics, things like that. Kind of providing that container for this work to happen collectively.
Yeah, I think there's another, we've found ourselves in the role of being kind of the food system beacon for Southern Oregon. So we work a lot with the statewide organizations and regencies who are agencies who are wanting to implement projects or create programs for Southern Oregon. The number of focus groups or contacts that I put through to Oregon Department of Agriculture, Oregon Community Food System Network, NRCS, all of these folks that are at the statewide and then Southern, like Greater Southern Oregon region, look to us to where they need to put resources or what, what's going on down here. So that's another role that we've ended up playing. And we worked with the Long-Term Recovery Group, where named the Food System Partner along with Rogue Food Unites. So we sat in them, that was part of the process of listening that fed into some of this data and the food assessment as we were going through the recovery. And so we're in their plan too.
Councilwoman Penomar.
My last one, I promise.
It's okay.
The statewide group, some, when you were talking, it reminded me of House of Oregon.
They're on the founding member on the council, Greg Holmes has been pivotal. He's the one who created the proclamation and did the original talks to city council and government.
You have cred without Greg.
We, we should just bring him along. He said he would.
Councilwoman Coley.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and putting together this exhaustive body of work. And a plug for everybody, you all's newsletter is very, it's a very good way to stay connected to anything food and farm related in the valley. Sometimes it's a long read, but it has a lot of information in it from funding to jobs to farmers markets to food, so great work.
Thank you so much.
So I think we should probably indicate whether or not we want to see that proclamation come back. And I think we can just do that with a consensus. Does anybody not want to see it come back to the next meeting? Any changes that we want to recommend for staff now based on what we heard?
Yeah, I was just, the word partnering, I just, you know, we want to be careful that we're not obligating the city with something that we're not sure what that means. So I, I didn't know. We did, so when we did it with ARP, we became a what is it, municipal city or something like that. We committed to that and, but we were basically saying we embrace these values. And so I think that's what we were trying to, we were trying to document.
Dave, did you have a suggestion?
Sharing Councilwoman Penomar's concern, the board partner, of course, in some context has real legal implications. So it makes me a little, little bit nervous. And I'm just wondering if the word supporter, instead of the partner word, but leaving the rest of the proclamation the same would serve your purposes just as well.
Yeah, certainly would. Love to see it come back with that change perhaps. Or staff, we'd love to see it come back with that change.
Quick question, we need, just email the language and you create it on your template, right? Because all the ones that I have in the drive from past are all different certificates, like the city had their own. Is that how it works?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah. Right. And send it to Hector or you both? Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Hey, I just want to say one other thing. Is there a designation anywhere, like we're a bee city and a tree city? Is there a food city or a farm city or?
I mean, that's a great idea. It's a great idea.
Oh.
We are looking at, you know, the Rogue Grove, there's, this, this area is so agriculturally rich. We have so much to offer. There is a need identified, like how do we share that with the world? So to be clear.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right, the next item on the agenda is appointment 6.1. There's an appointment of a member to the Urban Forestry Committee. One second while I get to my packet. Staff report.
Alex, would you like me to take one?
If you are there, Hector, that would be great.
We got a recommendation from the Urban Forestry Committee to appoint Frank Prince as an alternate member to the committee. There are two available seats.
Thank you, Hector. So with that, I had a chance to, to meet with Frank and send him for an interview. And we've received a recommendation to Forest Committee. And so I would ask the council to confirm the mayoral appointment of Frank Prince to the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. Councilwoman Coley.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to affirm the mayoral appointment of Frank Prince as an alternate member to the Urban Forestry Committee for a two-year term beginning on April 2nd, 2025.
Second, we have a motion and a second to appoint Frank Prince to, to affirm the mayoral appointment of Frank Prince as an alternate member to the Urban Forestry Committee for a two-year term beginning in, on April 2nd, 2025. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilwoman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Penomar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Medina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacizo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item seven. It is the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that the council wishes to pull out for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. I, I, no, I'm sorry, are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Councilor Byers?
Just on the noise permit for the OSF staff party. I see the time of the event and the time of amplification has changed from your last update. They're all happy with the time window?
Thank you for knowing that, counselor. We, we have not heard, we've not received any secondary communication from them about, about the permit.
Okay.
But yes, they, they heard the feedback and adjusted their request.
Thanks, that reminds me of a question I had about it as well. I don't remember whether or not this kind of noise permit or this timeframe requires them to notify the neighbors. Or, or.
It does.
It does. Yeah, and I just want to say as a neighbor, I have not been notified. So is there some sort of process that the city takes to make sure that everybody's been notified before these permits come before us for approval?
I'm not aware, and I'm not clear if the requirement is that they notify prior to the permit or if there's requirements they notify prior to.
Councilor Byers?
When I filled out one of these for another event in Ashland, a similar thing, you had to get signatures from every impacted business or residence.
Sounds like Ashland.
And then you turned it in with the permit.
Is there any, is there any reason not to, is there any reason why we would not just put this on the next agenda and ask them to fulfill that, especially given that they had received a complaint previously? The timing such that it would, I mean, I, I think their party is on the 20th and our next meeting is on the 16th, is that right?
Yeah.
I, I don't want to compress them so that they can't, I mean, they might not want to make their plans until they get this, but. Can we approve it provisionally? Councilwoman Penomar.
I wasn't clear whether Talent actually has the rule that you have to notify prior to receiving the permit. We were talking about Ashland as an example.
Dave was just checking that.
Oh, okay.
This memory is that it's prior to the event, but he was just checking whether it's prior.
Yeah.
I don't have it.
It does say in.
Yeah, reading the permit.
It does say what it. It says it right on the permit that it says, I mean, it doesn't say that, but it says on the permit that the applicant must contact residents in the immediate area that may be affected by the noise and advise them in advance of the application. So I don't think it really answers the question, but I do think that.
It also says form is attached for your convenience, which makes me think there is a signature form that should have been included with this permit when they received it to complete.
Anyway, I think if we, if we approve it provisionally, then whatever provisions they need to fulfill, we can trust the staff to take care of. Okay. So are there any other questions? Well, let's go ahead and take that one out for a separate motion. I'll entertain a motion. Councilwoman Penomar.
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the noise permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the noise permit, which is 7.5 on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, right?
Oh, yeah, I, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Coley? Yes. Councilwoman Penomar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Medina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacizo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Hector. All right, I'll entertain a motion on 7.5. Councilor Byers?
I move to provisionally approve this item 7.5, the noise permit for staff party at Oregon Shakespeare Festival facility contingent on receipt of, of documentation that all those needing to be notified about that noise permit are notified in advance of the event.
I have one discussion item on that. I have one discussion item on that motion. If there's not documentation required, we're assuming because it does suggest that there would be, but if it's not required, I think we might be as opposed to maybe a motion that said something like meets the the code requirements for this permit.
Sure. Sorry, I'm going off of the language in the actual permit.
Yeah, which makes sense. Where is that?
It's after parentheses, a notification to surrounding residents of intention to hold event with amplified music. Hyphen, form is attached for your convenience.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just read. Yeah, I'll just read it off of that. I don't want to change your motion if it's coming off the permit. I mean, I don't want you to ask you to change your motion. All right. Is there any discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve the noise, to approve agenda item seven point five, a noise permit for the staff party of the Oregon Shakespeare Festival Facility contingent on receipt of the documentation for, what did you say? For approval of the noise permit?
No, contingent on the receipt of the documentation by the impacted surrounding residents.
By the impacted surrounding residents. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Prenameau?
Yeah, I mean, it just seems that if they're going to sign it and they're going to agree to that, isn't that just, I'm just wondering if this is a rule that you know, if they, if they're signing the noise permit that's permitted to them and they're saying, I'm going to do these things. It just feels like, I don't know.
For the, for the, for the order, just to note that Karen was pulling up the permit itself, just for your awareness, the form, the form is a form for, for the notification. So it's a suggested format for them to provide to the neighbors.
Great.
So we could, we don't, clearly we do not have a signature. The, the, this form says that the signature acknowledges the commitment to carry that out. So I think I would interpret whatever, not, not whatever you all say, but I think our best course of action is just to make sure that we have a signed commitment to, to carry out the obligations at the time.
Sure.
And I should add that our ordinances don't say anything about notification to the nearby neighbors. The ordinance gives this, the city management, up to and comes, you know, guideline.
Okay.
So whatever you do, either way you go is not in violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'd like to amend my motion. With permission of a second.
Yes.
I move to approve this noise permit for the staff party at Oregon Shakespeare Festival Facility contingent on completion of resident notification as outlined in the permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the noise permit for the staff party at Oregon Shakespeare Festival contingent on completion of the resident notification as outlined in the
Permit.
Permit. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Coley?
Yes.
Counselor Prenameau?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Pacizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried, ma'am.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business eight point one is approval of the fiscal year 2025-26 city council goals, priorities, and action plan. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'd just like to acknowledge the great staff report from the city recorder and helping me gracefully manage the agenda. So I appreciate it. We last reviewed in very detail most of this document. I did not have the long-term plan piece of it really spelled out at that time. Since that time, I met with Josh Bombard at Department of Land Conservation Development and Matt Brinkley, are one of our consultant planners and also Rowan Airfield from Alvin Cog to do a little strategy session. And what we concluded and what I'm proposing here is to get on the record the acceptance of a couple of pretty substantial pieces of work that had already completed in the last recent, that last year or within the last six months. And that's the livable lands inventory in the railroad district. And then to turn it to code updates that would be driven apart by the Highway 99 corridor recommendations and and tackle likely at the same time or in similar time period. Notes, very high priority, there are questions that you all were discussing, just discussing about many storage of gas stations or self-storage of gas stations. Since that time, we've had some discussion, outdoor vehicle storage might be something else that we want to include as we talked about those kinds of uses. And then, and then also make sure that we complete the code updates that are required for state compliance. And that would be mass timber and climate-friendly and equitable communities. Good news on the climate-friendly and equitable communities front is a large portion of those requirements are going to come to us already through the highway recommendations. There's a lot of overlap there. Then, then the next priority would be the Title 17 and 18 particularly those items related to residential development that we would want to have in place prior to any additional urban UGV expansion. From there, we'll be ready to pursue UGV expansion through land swaps. So there are recent Senate bill, there's some pretty straightforward ability to swap land acre per acre. And assuming that the council does believe that the railroad district study makes sense and is a good basis for findings, at that point, we could bring in some additional lands to the urban growth boundary. The, the, there's some, then, then it begins a little, a little fuzzy here. There's, there's some, there's some parts of the urban reserves, just to mark the city along 99 that I think we would seriously consider bringing in as well that are identified for industrial use only. So that, I think that's, that's a long-term challenge and would require some work with regional planning for, well, that, that's, I think that's true regardless of which route we got to bring them in. There, there is ultimately, you know, the city will need, need to, will want to do a housing capacity analysis and transportation system planning update, a number of comp plan updates. But my suggestion is that we not prioritize those in advance of getting Title 17 and 18 cleaned up and grabbing some of the lower hanging fruit in terms of urban reserves.
And that's TA5. Oh, yeah, that's the one on the.
On the east side.
On the east side.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Please.
Are you still on your staff report? Because I don't want to interrupt it.
No, I think that's, that's the gist of it.
So I appreciate the fact that, I appreciate the fact that we are almost saying in this goal setting that TA5 is contingent on completion of 17 and 18. I actually think the Planning Commission is going to have a little heartburn that we have prioritized the TGM recommendations and or the Bear Creek 99 assessment recommendations as well as, what was the other one?
Mass, mass timber.
Mass timber, yeah. I, I feel like the Planning Commission has a legitimate concern about prioritizing that. And what I, what I would like to do is somehow build language in here that either suggests that he, that annexing or beginning the process, the RPS process for any additional lands is contingent on the completion of, like, I would want that language firm. Only because we, we keep committing to TA, to 17 and 18, but we never seem to get to it. And it's been years, years. Either that or just look at a way of, of maybe prioritizing 17 and 18 prior to at least the mass timber. I have to say, I, when I was reading the draft report for 99, the TGM process, it occurred to me, my gosh, these could be done while we're doing 18 at the same time, just because they address, I mean, it's really the same process. So I, I feel like if we could, yeah, if we could just prioritize things a little bit differently, that might, might be better. And then just making it contingent that TA5 is not, that process is not, I don't want to say not started because I know how this works, right? It takes years to get to a point where you're actually bringing things in. But you know, what is, what is the the point at which we would want to not go any further without having those codes changed? Does that make sense?
Absolutely, Mayor. So I think, I think that's the order that's laid out here, but I think you're, you're saying you want, you want it clear that thou shall not go beyond, we won't skip step Title 17 and 18 before going on to, to the urban, urban growth boundary.
Yeah. Yeah.
And regarding your, your other points about mass, I, I know the CFET compliance deadline is the end of this year. The mass timber, I think, may actually be earlier than that.
Okay.
That we, I, I can go back and review, make sure that we're not, you know, rushing if we don't need to on the mass timber. I do think, as you're saying, that the, the Highway 99 suggestions get into a lot of the issues that are of interest in Title 18. And there's been a tremendous amount of staff work and professional planning work that's gone into them. So I think it, we're, we're gonna, we've already got set up an April 22nd informational session with the Planning Commission on the, on the Highway 99 suggested code revisions. And I think we, we may find that there's resistance and a desire to, to take things more holistically as part of Title 18, where I think we may find that there's an eagerness, there's some stuff that's teed up really well there and might, we might be able to get forward on some of the desired changes to Title 18 fastest by tackling these code amendments. I mean, they're literally written in terms of specific talent municipal code revisions.
Yeah. So am I hearing, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. I think what I was suggesting is that we do them concurrently. Did I hear you say the same thing?
Yeah, I think so. I, yeah, I think to put it a little bit more mechanically, we might be blurring the line between B and C and maybe mass timber is a little, is after C, but clearly C has to happen.
Yeah, I think whatever timeline, whatever timeline we're mandated on the mass timber, I think we just need to stick to, but, but I do appreciate, and I think the Planning Commission will appreciate, I'm just guessing of, of us working on those other items concurrently, I think. And I do think that that'll make actually the code revisions coming from 99 a little more palatable as well. I mean, it'll make more sense. When you read them, it does make, yeah, it's, yeah, that sounds great. So I guess the only piece that I, I mean, I, I mean, I think that's just the function of, of the staff. And I don't think there's any added language there to make sure that those get done concurrently. But I do, I would hope that we could build in a little something, something, full something, something that says no TA5 until we've completed this work.
I think, I think that, that interest is clear. And so if you, if you all wanted to make a motion to accept it with that caveat, staff could make that clear in the, in the final version.
Okay, I'll leave that to council then. All right. Is there any other comments? Or did you have anything to add on this for your staff report?
No, unless there are questions, we'll discuss.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Prenameau?
Yes, I move to approve the council goals as presented with the amendment that it be clarified that Titles 17 and 18 asks be prioritized prior, should I say, completed prior to the work on UGV.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the city goals with the amendment that Title 17 and 18 are completed before UGV work. Did I get that right, Counselor?
Yeah.
Is that language sufficient to accomplish or is it?
If, if I might, I, I think the key point is that we don't want to complete the UGV work, that there, there is some ability to walk and chew gum and there may be some, some, some work on the UGV that we want to initiate even before the Title 17 and 18.
Well, maybe it's, are you suggesting then maybe a language that's, that says, that identifies the completion of UGV work rather than beginning the UGV work?
Okay.
Yes.
So I have to say the whole thing?
Well, is it okay with the second to amend? I'm hearing, okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
I move to adopt the, the council goals as written with the amendment that titles, the work on Title 17, 18 be prior to the completion of the UGV work.
We have a motion and, is there a second? And a second to approve the city council goals with the amendment that Title 17 and 18 be completed before the completion of the UGV work. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Coley?
Yes.
Counselor Prenameau?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Pacizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Thank you, Hector. Counselor Park?
I just want to say a big thank you to staff for all of the time that we've put in to discussing and considering so carefully this goals process for upcoming budgeting process. I, it's taken us a while to get here and I'm, I'm really grateful for the thoughtfulness that's gone into this.
Well said. Item number eight point two is next steps on design build contract for historic town hall. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I, I'm going to ask Dave to start with just a clarification of what the process is vis a vis a design build contract to, and give you all an opportunity to ask questions about that. And then turn it to our finance director to talk about the substance of what the work is.
Thank you, Alex.
To quickly kind of set context, the contract with the Ausland Group that you approved in November was a design build contract model on the American Institute of Architects Design Build Contract, which is the pretty much nationwide standard for big project, public works, public improvement projects. And in that contract that you approved, there's a process set up in this standard contract that provides several steps after the initial design build contract is approved. And the steps basically require the contractor to do a little more work each time and then come back to staff and to, in this case, to the Historic Town Hall Restoration Group and report where they are. Uh, and report where they are and then finally, you know, the kind of the fourth step. Um, after doing a preliminary evaluation, a preliminary design and preliminary proposal. Is to come back with an amendment to the original contract. Um, and that's what you have before you now. Um, is, so what you're seeing is a very ordinary, it's kind of traditional. Um, design build process that allows for iteration and learning during the process. Until you get to the point where we're at now, where we have a. Definity um, proposal that uh, you can prove. And in the form of an amendment to that original contract.
Thank you, Dave.
Tessa? Great, great. Thank you. Um, before you in his amendment and a resolution reducing the scope and the cost of the Ausland Group's design build contract. For foundation repairs of Talents Historic Town Hall. The building is currently closed due to fire restoration efforts and a fight and failing foundation. Which needs urgent repairs to prevent further damage and to allow safe reoccupate occupation of the building. Initially budgeted at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the project will now be funded. Um, with two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, also known as ARPA. Ausland Group was selected through a co- a competitive process and was awarded the contract in November of twenty twenty-four. However, heavy snowfall in February of twenty twenty-five. Increased the urgency of repairs. Ausland Group provided a cost estimate. That exceeded available funds, so a revised scope was developed to address the most critical repairs within the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget. More repairs, including foundation work on the nineteen twenty-seven building addition. Um, there's repairs that needs to be done to the sagging east addition wall. There needs to be repairs to the central main structural frame and there should be some drainage improvements. Um, all of these remain unfunded and may be covered through grants, donations, or possibly other city funds. City staff recommend that this talent city council direct the city manager pro tem to execute the design build amendment with Ausland Group and adopt. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one four dash R. Any questions about repairs?
I have a question about ARPA funds. Okay, um, so the report says that staff has determined that. The ARPA funds are the best source of funding for the project. Um, I honestly may have misplaced my memory on this, but. Well, did that come before the council?
We discussed that, I do believe it was in November. Um, the art originally came to Tura. And Tura budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the repairs. And after a discussion with uh, Forest City Manager Gary Millen, and he felt that that was. The best use was to use the ARPA funds and to use the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was. Originally dedicated for the town hall restoration um, improvements and to use those funds for the gateway.
Okay, I just don't recall having that discussion. Did we approve that? Was that a, was that a, an item on the agenda for approval?
I don't remember what.
I I I'm not saying I disagree with it.
No, 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 I don't, I don't remember.
I'm just wondering, I just don't remember that uh, coming and and I don't remember the council prioritizing this project about ARPA funds. Um, not, again, I'm not saying I don't agree with it, I'm just, I just don't remember any of that.
Yeah, there was um, one two, one point two million dollars in ARPA funds that needed to be um, dedicated by December thirty-first of this last year. The three projects that were chosen was part of the skate park, um, the other one was the um. Town hall and then the other, the most, the big one is the meter replacement program.
Yeah, I remember the two, I just don't remember the the one.
I'm sorry, my my, my mind is.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it, if, 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 if that was part of the overall presentation at the time.
My, my brain, it leaves me on this one.
Yeah, okay, that's true, that's right, don't. Yeah, I mean, I can't remember the charter, so. So we're all in the same boat. Um, all right, Council Penomar.
Um, I'm just, I, I think I remember, I thought we did this already. Of ARPA money going to the, I thought we voted on it, so.
November, I just don't remember it being a part of this project. I, it's again, I'm not saying, I agree with it, but um, Council Byers.
Uh, separate question, but I guess kind of related. I was noticing in the contract that the city covers all permitting.
Correct.
Uh, fees and there was another fee as well.
Insurance, uh, utilities and. Yeah, those three pe- those three pieces.
Uh, do we have enough reserved in ARPA funding to cover all of that as well?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, um, I don't know what the impact, it may be minimal in nature.
Okay.
It may end up coming out of the town hall fund.
Okay.
Actually, mine items.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So I'll entertain a motion. Council Byers.
Um. I move to direct the city manager pro tem to execute the design build amendment with Ausland Group and adopt. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one four dash R.
We have a motion and a second to direct the city manager pro tem to execute. The design build amendment with Ausland Group and adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one four, one hundred and fourteen dash R. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Council fully.
Yes.
Council Penomar.
Yes.
Council Medina.
Yes.
Council Pacizo.
Yes.
Council Byers.
Yes.
And Council Paramla.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you, Tessa, for. Continuing to swing for the town hall. We all want to see it. Um. Next item on the agenda is nine point one, discussion of economic opportunity assessment. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, I'm, I'm. Uh, may compete with Council Penomar for uh, nerd excitement on this topic. I, I. It is fun for me to read this document, um, rather than going step by step. Um, through a lot of in- information here, um, I thought I I might just share um, my, my key takeaways. From I see really certain three sections of this report. There's the the initial part that's essentially a a strength, a squat, as. Strengths, weakness and opportunities, um, kind of analysis. There's the section on the specific site. Opportunities and uh, and the next steps. Um, so. Um, I, I'll, I'll share my thoughts about or my key takeaways from the squat and then. Uh, maybe open it up for questions or discussion um, there. So um. There's the mention of uh, high, high construction costs, right? And that, that's, that is a reality and. And the, those are always um, relative to the value of the opportunity, right? But it's a, it's um. It's through, it's the, it's only one sided equation. Um, and it's related to how much you can realize by building and meeting the market. Um, and that's really a question of time as well, right? And then there, there is um. There's both uh, ups and downs in construction costs due to business cycles and there's also. Um, I firmly believe uh, uh, growth in the value of the, of the improvements. That are going to be made here in town over uh, the next few years. Um, so also mention of land pricing. And land pricing is always uh, frustrating for, for those of us who want to see stuff get done and. Uh, people who own land often have inflated ideas of what it's worth. Um, and there's a, a really tricky question of whether you uh, public, I mean, he wants to sit by and. And see if those land values adjusted reality. If it doesn't pencil to build that thing on land at the current value. They're asking too much for it. Um, or there's the, there's a city step in and uh, you know, um, try to intervene and. Increase the cost of that land, subsidize that part, that land purchase and that's, that's always a different question. Um, there's several mentions of regulatory law. That is. And it's something we're talking now to set this up for uh, for more success in the future. I would, I would note that that's always a complaint, right? About just about every jurisdiction in the world hears that complaint. I will say I've heard that. Uh, corroborated by professional planners on this, on this human. There, there is a, there is. This isn't a perception, it's only uh, one that's held by folks who have been told. Um, I think the hospitality and light manufacturing um, opportunities are uh. Really sing to me in that they align with the art artisan marks led developments or overall theme. I see that as the, the overall. Uh, guiding principle. And that's the key strength of the community. The, and, and the hospitality builds on that strength and to leverage that strength in the light manufacturing also. Um, it allows the, you know, creates opportunities for those artisans and makers to take the next step. Those who are interested in taking the next step into further uh, production. Um, there's a good discussion about the infrastructure game and and um, you know, I think that, I think the city. Um, has clearly done a great job of capturing grants for infrastructure and the gateway peer. Projects are a fine example of that and and uh, make our success in executing that will set us up for uh, for more opportunities. Um, and I think, I think the, the discussion of residential development as a driver is really appropriate. I, I. I imagine um, many, if not all of you all have, have heard the converse. There's been sort of a, a traditional view that um, the residential doesn't really pay its way. In terms of public finances and what you really want is commercial and industrial. Um, I think their, their point is one residential values are, are such that that, that, that dynamic's changing. The other realities, I think a lot of that, a lot of that's driven by um. It's not necessarily relevant to the original experience. You don't have sales tax, so that reduces what we get from commercial. And the way that our schools are funded, schools are a huge cost typically, they're not the city's cost. And the way our school districts are looking at it. And and the way that school funding is so state-driven and it's really driven by the population count. That that dynamics really different too, from the way that we, that we looked at it in the past. So um. And that's, that's where I'll stop as far as things that jumped out of my way of that first section.
Any questions, uh, Council Penomar?
Yeah, just a, this is just something that jumped out at me. It's like the opportunities for short-term rentals. There's a history um, around twenty nineteen. Seeing short-term rentals as really uh, posed to long-term housing and this, and we have ordinances in place. I think you're not allowed to use the whole, I, I forget how that ended up. But we were looking to keep that pretty uh, restricted, so we. So people weren't using it and we weren't losing um, long-term housing. So it's a bit of a sensitive area um, just for that.
I think the, our policy probably took longer to develop than the council rules that we just did. Um. Council Byers.
Uh, just one, one other comment on hospitality, just because I interface pretty frequently with um. Travel Ashland and Ashland Chamber. Ashland's having a really hard time filling their hotels right now. So while further down the road, that might be um, something, uh, something that. Would support us right now. I think there's, it's kind of actually the opposite. And that's a really struggling sector right now.
It'd be interesting to see their occupancy rates compared to Medford because Medford's occupancy rates were really high and um. And I'm, I know that that has a lot to do with the fields and will getx. Um, and it'd just be interesting to see like. What would be the driving factors for talent? And that's not to say that I think we should forgive our, our. Our present policies on um, short-term rentals, but. I, I, I wonder what would impact, like I'm legitimately wondering which, what, you know, there's compression and. What, if there's compression in Medford, would that impact talent at all? Phoenix doesn't have enough. To make me feel like they would be able to absorb it all. Does that make sense?
Totally, and it's a metric planning on building a convention center.
Uh-huh, and as close as we are to the um, fields, um, those fields, that whole south. How south Medford is just. Um, you know, the occupancy of South Medford is really high.
He class Facebook.
Interesting.
It, it is, especially just considering how like, how different the situation is north and south of us.
Mm-hmm.
It's really hard to guess which.
Which will impact us most.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but your point's not lost and I think, uh, I think it's an important one, for sure. Um, but I do, if I may, just on, in closing this point, I do think this is the time and I know it's in our goals to deal with. Transient. Yeah, transient and lodging.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Council Penomar?
Yeah, so I'm looking at um, you know, opportunities, regulatory improvements. Streamlining the permitting and, and yeah, right on. I think, I think the, the whole idea of being clear, making administrative. We've been working on, we've been hearing that message for years and, and I think we're all behind it. Um, as far as, you know, there were stories about, you know, the, right after the fire about people asking ridiculous amounts of money. When um, housing authority was walking around with millions of bucks and couldn't buy it, like, um, just kind of the whole. You know, mentality of holding on to it until you get a better deal. And I'm wondering if there's an economic mechanism or regulatory mechanism. Um, to kind of shift that, so it wasn't so uh, attractive to the profit motive to hold on. To basically lock down uh, land for a long period of time. And I, and I know that there's other states have used like a vacancy tax. Or something like that, but I, I think I would be interested in learning more about uh, tools in the toolbox for a city. To um, get some movement on some of that really ugly vacant land uh, that could. So be put to better use. You mentioned in some subsidizing, that's kind of the carrot. I'm wondering if there's a stick. To leverage along with it. Um, so that would be something that I'd be really interested in exploring.
I appreciate that point. Um, I, I know that I, I remember a small-scale manufacturer, an Ashland, coming to talent and speculating. About moving here and um, when they started looking, this was shortly after the fire. Um, land prices were really relevant to, relative to the people that had been there. Prejudice to the fire and were looking to sell their property. And then there was a period where properties were bought up by. Um, and you know, real estate folks and the prices went up and they literally came to our office and said. I mean, we, we were looking at one point in time, the prices were like this and now they're like this and we're not looking anymore. And um, so uh, what an interesting. Outcome from. From uh, businesses that, that relocated because they had to. Um, rebuilding was not an option for them and so selling their property turned out to be. Uh, ended up, it seems like it ended up being a barrier. One anecdotal story doesn't prove that out, but it is an interesting. Possibility.
That's called disaster capitalism.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I guess there's probably more than one anecdotal story, but that's just the one I heard. Um. Well, this is a great report. Um. And I would imagine we'll be seeing some planning emerging from this.
Yeah, yes, so um, in terms of the, the um, discussions of the specific sites, um, I thought there's some really interesting stuff there. The, the gateway really reinforced the way that you all have been thinking uh, along with Matt about mixing uses horizontally rather than. And vertically. Um, the, the other thing that it reminded me of a discussion that I can't remember who I've had it with, so I apologize. Uh, who, uh, not giving, maybe not giving credit to, but. Um, I think there may be a really neat opportunity with the gateway. There's mention of live, live workspace here, right? Live workspace very rarely gets occupied in the way that you want it to. But if it was the affordable ownership option, that would give the city the opportunity to tie it to a requirement that actually goes to folks. That are going to use it as intended and becomes a really interesting connection to the. Native city and, and the larger sort of artisan maker uh, ecology that is already. neighbor city and, and the larger sort of artisan maker uh ecology that is already exists that here in the cities. Uh, you know, uh, I think the interest in continuing to reinforce. So I, that, that was, that was exciting to me. Um.
Um, I'm, I'm just gonna ask you to, can you expand on that a little bit? Because I start, that I was following, so.
Yeah, so, so um live workspace, right, is, is uh typically uh a, a home that's designed to also have a commercial or, or uh
Like a storefront?
It could, it can be a storefront, it can be more maker space, art studio, we can take a number of forms. But uh, and a lot of communities have encouraged it and provided zoning for it and even incentivized it. But it often ends up being occupied by folks who just see that as kind of a cool place to live. Um, there's the stuff down in the railroad district in Ashland that um was, is basically that they, they originally zoned it and it had to be occupied that way and had to relax their zoning to get it, to get it occupied and, and so it's, they're just being and, and that's a very, fairly common story. They end up being kind of these unusual quirky homes that they just, are just homes. But if the, if it was uh affordable ownership or community land trust kind of model and that, that product was live workspaces because the community land trust selection process, you could actually say, hey, we only want people to occupy, to buy these homes, this opportunity to be made available to buy these homes in a market to, to folks who are bona fide artisans, artists who are, need to make the, the, the commercial space.
So to keep the bougie people out, basically.
Uh, you know, I, 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 I'm thrilled to hear you talking like this because I think when we, you know, with the years that we've had the gateway in progress and planning, we've gone through cycles and you're brand new to this. We've gone through cycles where we've had like, here's the path of least resistance and you can build this and we're done. And, and we've had some really creative ideas come from the community. And when our, when our administrative leadership is talking that creatively, it's pretty exciting. Because I don't think talent wants to see uh anything less than that. And it may not be that, but it's, you know, that kind of, that kind of thinking um and that kind of ability to bring those ideas together in an affordable way that might actually accomplish the goal uh that we're excited to have you uh bring to the table. Please keep that up.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I will note on the Walmart site, there is an error. They listed one of the ownerships as RVSS. Um, I'm gonna have them fix that. Um, and I think, I think the Walmart site is, is a, is a site where we really need to align with So Ready. I mean, the type of development I think we want to see there is really not it's not, it doesn't make sense for, for city of talent to be chasing users for that kind of space because we've only got one site and it's a large site. We need to really make sure that it's So Ready is talking about that site and using that site as they're, as they're doing their work.
Right.
That the, the West Valley View in South Pacific, you know, discussion was interesting. It's clearly an assembly, you know, an opportunity for assembly. Land assembly is, is a critical public tool. Um, the finances for it, you know, are typically urban renewal. Uh, there's a great use of urban renewal funding. So um and in the meantime, we have a couple of uses out there that are temp only, temp, they're on temp use permits. Um, we're processing another one. And my, my intent and strategy there is to allow temp uses to be good maintain good relationships with those landlords. I don't, I think we, we're gonna need to work with those landlords. We don't want those landlords feeling like the city wants them to lose money on their land. On the other hand, by uh only authorizing them temporarily, we're not allowing them to entitled uses that through future land use changes, we don't want to see there. So that, that it gives us the ability to, to shape development in the future.
And when you say temp uses, are you describing um uses that might be relaxing like our normal standards in some way that?
They, they are, our code does allow them to go in with less improvement. They do. Um, so like Gar- uh, you know, the Garcia's uh restaurant, like does not meet the landscape requirements that we would normally require. And it's a, it's a little bit of a give and take. You know, you're only given them six months or a year of land use uh permission. So yes.
That's interesting. And good to know.
Um, you know, then uh turn to the suggestions and just run it through these quickly. I think we're, we're really on, on target with a lot of them. They clearly working hard on the gateway, uh engaging development and investor partners. Um, I, I, that's fun work for me and, and we, um, we've been doing some of that already, although there's, there's quite a bit to do. Uh, Gateway is a great example of leveraging incentives and infrastructure. Um, I'm need, um, the suggestion to advance infill and small-scale development. Now, I think we do have limited, we have limited tools there. Um, and, but the land, the regulatory form and the land use uh changes I think are important. And again, that is a place where urban renewal would be a really valuable tool. Um, there's the suggestion to continue leveraging arts, dining and culture. And I, I just want to say kudos to talent business lines and, and travel Southern Oregon. I think the destination um work is spot on and really addresses exactly that issue. Um, and, and again, I think we should seek ways to tie the gateway development to those goals.
Councillor Coley?
Yeah, this is an exciting document to read. Um, I had a question about the uh TID section. Is there a reason that the whole TID property is not an opportunity area and just the Southeastern portion of it, I guess?
That's a great question. I, I would suspect that that's uh, there, there, there were several errors that Gary cleaned up. There are a couple that I caught. I, I suspect that that's but I, I definitely wanted to clean it up before we sort of memorialize it. Um, so thanks. And then um, in, in the discussion of residential, um, the thing that really jumped out to me and I want to commend this council, I mean, the fact that forty percent of all three family units in this, in the city are, are affordable is, you know, that's accomplishment that I think the city can be really proud of. Um, and I think it also reinforces the discussion that Victoria City had about exploring this, this mall, the middle income evolving mall fund. So what are the tools that we can also address the gap in between the market and the affordable housing that, that the city supported? Um, and uh, and obviously it's community and stakeholder engagement. There's, um, there's plenty of work to be done there. Um, but I, I, it's, I think it's exciting and, and um, I think, I think building that, not building the compelling vision, but sharing a compelling vision that I think is already personalizing. Um, you know, is, is the way that we really, that we get support to have one to this. Uh, to, to, so anyway, that, those were the, I take away, so I think it's a good piece of work. Um, and we'll
Really good to hear. Sounds like it was a good investment. Councillor Penamra?
Yeah, there's so many really interesting things in here. I just, this is kind of a tangent, but I'm, I'm looking at the Walmart um building and I and I was a little bit, so you know, having So Ready handle that, it's because it's like, just like such huge building and we're talking, you know, big dealers. Um, yeah, I, I, one thing that occurred to me and I, I don't know, Mayor, if you remember, uh, when, when we heard that uh food and friends, um, because Access is ending their lease uh in August, the beginning of August. They're looking for another place um to do their food production. I think somebody said at one of the meetings, what they, what they could really use is just a large warehouse that they could design and build how, you know, the way they needed. I, I don't know, this might be even too big for them, if I remember. But maybe part of it is that I think one of the ideas was to um break it up into multiple uses there. I don't know if that's um
Well, I don't, I don't think I'm saying anything that's uh not on the public record, but I'm pretty sure RB cog was saying not so fast at this point in time on that, on that whole thing, on that whole that whole reorganizing the use of that space.
Right, but I think they're exploring. They're, they're kind of, yeah, I think they're, they are looking around for um spaces. Anyway, it, it might be something um worth mentioning or thinking about.
Um, thank you councillor. I, I, and just to be clear, um, my suggestion wasn't that we want So Ready to recharge in any sense, but, but, but So Ready is, there, there, there may be a role in user, right, for that site. But given its scale, it's, seems likely to mean that the player who wants that scale is looking at the very minimal regionally, maybe I five, maybe, you know, west coast. Um, and it, it's just really important to, for us to find the best user that we, we're, we're making sure that it's being not considered just as important.
I'm hearing you say, put it on So Ready site tour.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, can I just follow up? And, and just to be clear, we do not have really any, except through our zoning, we have no control. Yeah, absolutely. No control what business sets up there, except if we have, you know, zoning that makes it difficult for certain.
I think, I think we have influence though and um by making sure that it is on the radar of So Ready and, and any other organization that might be romancing larger types of businesses. And I don't know what happened, but um because I didn't follow up before Gary left, but he said that he was working with a real estate agent. Uh, I think they were out of Shady Cove, maybe. Their office was out of Shady Cove and they were working on a data center.
The junction.
Junction, yeah. And it was one of those small towns.
Not the same.
Uh huh. All right. That'll go. No data center. Uh, councillor Penamra?
I just wanted to echo no data center, just because I've been hearing about how uh they're not really great companies to have because they can pick up and move on a second after they've, you know, uh, kind of like uh forced all the utilities to um serve their very heavy-duty needs in terms of energy and then they can move very quickly. So um, I don't, even though I work in data, I would not be a fan of a data center.
Cool stuff. Uh, councillor Byers?
Just a connected thought. I'm re-reviewing this. Um it sounds like I'm making a really specific plug, but uh I, this is reiterating to me how important a lot of what the Parks Commission has prioritized is as well in attracting developers and of various sorts, just with those community amenities to be able to leverage.
Yeah, livability, number one. Yeah, for their workforce, number one. And you know, I don't know if you remember, but when commons came, we were faced with not, uh, with uh housing affordability and availability. Um, so they had a really hard time coming here because of housing availability. So that, um I'm like, come on. Yeah, I mean, nervous there for a second, Dave. Okay. All right. Well, is there anything else to discuss? Alex, any other questions? Thank you. Uh, and it's been fun. So the next item on the agenda is nine point two, which is authorizing hiring of a new city planner staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Um, so I, I did discuss this a, a couple ti- a few times with, with the city attorney. Um, my understanding of the city charter um prohibition on uh interim city manager hiring folks without um approval from the city council is to keep the city manager on something irresponsible or not what the city doesn't want done. Um, at, with the city planner position in particular that we're looking for, I was hoping to hire an actual individual candidate to present to you tonight. So I will introduce them with the uh, we should all, um, and we are doing, actually did a second round in the event and have another one tomorrow. Um, with that function in particular, timing is one, the city has obligations to respond to, to development uh inquiries in a timely manner. And each time we transition from one interim solution to another, we increase the opportunities for us to, to lose ground, miss things that we don't want to miss. So um I would like to ask that your, your uh, your authorization for me to go ahead and, and hire a city planner, I find able to, uh, between now and the next meeting or between the next meeting and the following meeting, um, just so we can do it as quickly as possible.
I want to have, I, I, I don't want to interfere with uh this discussion much, but I, I want to have a, a little bit of discussion about just kind of like the, the organization chart. Um, and um, and then sort of how we, how it is that we find ourselves in a place where we are hiring a city planner, just give it that a little context. Um, and I'm hoping this, this would be the appropriate place to do that. Um, so I remember, you know, I mean, every year when we get a budget, we have an organizational chart that's included in the budget and it's part of our adoption process. This is the organization where uh staff is recommending and this is what you're, you're, you're adopting. And I would imagine that city planner is in that um last organization chart.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. We, we have it at Dr. Taylor's schedule.
I, I imagine that it is, but it, it doesn't mean that it is. But, but for the purpose of this discussion, we're headed towards another budget here pretty soon and I hope to see what you're gonna be proposing as an organization chart. But I remember when we um talked about um Kristin, uh, we, we had us, we had us uh, uh, community development director that, uh, that um went to the county and um, and the, the city manager at the time recommended that because he had run a community development department himself for a, a period of time and because of his long um long-range community development experience, he believed that it would suffice him talented just have a city planner and not pursue a planning director, um, that he could fulfill that role. I think it worked okay, but uh I probably have some criticism in hindsight and some success stories at hindsight. Um, but with that, what I, when I read this report, I, it, what occurred to me is, okay, so we are seeing a transition at RV cog. So I know that in, in the last city manager's plan to have just a planner, part of that plan would be to get support from RV cog. And um, so that, that was like this three-legged stool that he had set up. Um, so now we're seeing a transition there and we're seeing um a transition uh in the city manager's seat. And I don't mean to get into a discussion about your, your experience with planning, but you can see where I'm, I hope you can see where I'm headed is that the whole landscape has changed now. And I'm wondering, just to hear from you, do you still, are you in a position yet? Have you evaluated enough to decide whether or not, how you're gonna move forward with the community development? Because I want to make sure then when we're talking about what to do right now, and obviously we need to do something right now. And that's really clear in your report and I support that one hundred percent. But as we're moving forward, what are your, do you have uh an idea of this, is this a structure you want to set up for the organizational structure? Are you in a place to even assess that? Can I hear some thoughts about that?
Yeah, great. That is great, great questions, great thoughts. Um, so um you, you didn't ask the question, but I, in terms of the pieces of city work that I have the most expertise in, it is certainly the community development realm. Um, I worked at City of Milwaukee. I was in the development department. Um, and economic development is typically community development. So um, um, I do feel comfortable moving forward from a So, um, um, I do feel comfortable moving forward for myself, I had not thought about. The implications for my potential immediate successor, it may not be a great fit for them, um, and that's definitely not something that I, 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 I thought into. I will, I will, uh. Be quiet, um. In terms of whether it's the right structure for the city, and it's a workable structure for the, for the city, I, I think it is, um. And uh, and uh, I, my, my, my overall approach in thinking about the individuals that we've been interviewing. Um, is that some of, some of them are well suited to grow into that long-range planning role. Um, I shouldn't say so, one of them is, one of them is really well suited to, to actually um, support. More the city in terms of GIS developers, which we are currently purchasing under contract and we're going to utilize them. And so we'd really support, help encourage where we're going, and support long-range planning in a different way. Um, so, um, and I, Dave's had a few suggestions, I think. Um, in addition to already called, I think there, there are some other opportunities to, to hire folks who may be. Retired, semi-retired, or getting close and interested in sort of half-time, quarter-time type roles. Um, that could be a really good solution, maybe a better solution than RV cog frankly, um, so. That's how I've been thinking about it, that ultimately, you know, the, this, this, the city, um. Uh, overall structure needs to be flexible and take advantage of the strengths of the best people that you, that we, that are interested in working here, um, and so, um. That's my medium to longer-term thought is really adapting it to, to working, working with the best folks that we've had. And the fact that we are, do have the cog and, and some good uh, contract relationships, um, that would naturally, um, you know, awesome. That has been helping as well on some, sort of a strategy, I think we are, I think we are set up well for, to assist in with the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've seen none, I'll entertain a motion. Council buyers.
Um, I move to approve the city manager pro tem to make an offer and hire a city planner at salary, at a salary within the pay range listed on the city's approved salary schedule.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the city manager pro tem to make an offer and hire a city planner at a salary within. The pay range listed on the city's approved salary schedule. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Council Colley.
Yes.
Council Pramor.
Yes.
Council Medina.
Yeah.
Council Pesebo.
Yes.
Council Buyers.
Yes.
Council Pramler.
Yes.
Motion carried there.
Thank you. Hey, can I just ask you a quick question, Alex? Uh, so when you say that long-range planner role, you mean a planning director? Is that what you meant by that?
Well, um, I was thinking more about the sort of long-range planning functions essentially, but, but yeah, I think they're, that. Um, I, I would love to hire somebody who's fairly early career and has room for growth, I mean, stability and continuity in that position is really valuable. So, that, that's kind of my dream, is that we hire somebody that would grow into a planning director.
Yeah, and that makes sense, and I, you know, as a, as a previous manager myself, I, I loved doing that as well for a lot of reasons, but. What I mean is, uh, I, I guess I was just looking for that definition, that when you're talking about a long-range planner role. That's fitting the workload of a, a kind of the director's role, like you want to grow somebody in, long-range planning is typically the work of a director, is that correct?
Um, it depends on the size of the jurisdiction, I mean, there are certain jurisdictions that have planted trees that are. Full-time long-range planners.
Gotcha.
Um, it, it's, a- as that person did take on more long-range planning. You probably want, you probably need some more help with the, with the short range, and that might be an opportunity for a building cap or somebody else who's part of our structure to. You know, take on some, some.
Great, thank you for that, I just wanted to better understand that. Um, all right, so the next item on the agenda, um, I, in my packet, there is the OWEB grant, but I'm not seeing it on the. Department's report. What's that?
It's a department report.
It's part of the department report? Okay, gotcha, thank you. Um, so, uh, number ten, department report, staff.
Yeah, uh, thank you, mayor, members of the council, I, I, I invited Gao Ying to not, uh, not necessarily attend, just to provide a short update on, on OWEB, so I'll, I'll present on her behalf. Um, there are over seven hundred trees uh planted, um, the next steps are twelve trees uh in tree wells along South Pacific Highway. Fifty-five trees at SOS Plumbing, uh, forty trees at six hundred South Pacific Highway, which is the H plus project. And twenty-five trees at the footprint pathway park. Um, the, we have until May thirty-first, um, to identify some additional opportunities, so. With the encouragement of Urban Forestry Committee and support from, um, Karen. We're going to be doing a, a mailing to all the folks along ninety-nine in particular, to make sure that we're, we're, uh, we're not missing anybody who's interested. Um, we're gonna put also, I, I think, uh, a notice in the, in the, maybe, uh, TNR. Um, but, and if we. Um, whatever, whatever of the hundred and forty remaining trees, we don't find homes through, through those additional outreach efforts, um, we find a home at the public works. So that's, that's the up.
Did we plant it a couple of words?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Uh, council colleague.
Yeah, um, I really appreciate the, the extra effort that's gonna go into contact people on ninety-nine, because that's. I was driving it the other day, and like, there's like ten trees on Highway ninety-nine between Valley View and the end of town, so. Many trees if we can get planted on ninety-nine. Be really great, so I'm very excited to hear that. That's happening.
Man, it sure would soften. The, the, the look of ninety-nine, uh, to have trees along there, council buyers.
Well, it would also increase the walkability.
Yeah, for sure.
Ability, but I, just an anecdote, um, I've had a number of community members ask why the city of talent hasn't been planting trees down ninety-nine. And they're always shocked to be reminded that it's actually private property, and you.
That we can't just go out there.
Go out and do it, yeah. So, um, thank you for all that sort of work.
Thanks, Karen. Alrighty.
Um, and then, uh, I'll provide a quick a- administration department update, um, I, I think, wanted to let you know about a couple, um. Resource, uh, or grant proposals of that we, that are in the works, uh, to keep you all in the loop. Um, House Bill thirty-eight seventy, uh, would fund rural public safety investments, that's, uh, uh, in consideration of the legislature right now. Uh, at Marsha's invitation, we did put forward a proposal for uh, two million dollars to, to. Complete or to do an expansion at the, at the public, uh, police department. Um, so I understand, did a little research about the two thousand seven, two thousand eight renovations there, I believe. Uh, as, as council chambers were a part of the, the plan at one point, the master plan. Um, what we're proposing is, um, expansion, we include records and evidence storage, and a large, uh, a large meeting room that could. Support training and emergency operations center, and potentially also, that's, that's the direction the city wanted to go. Um, there would be some impact on the dog park, I, I sketch that sort of an assing, I think. At most, it's a quarter or a third of that dog park, it would be very functional, a lot prepared with, uh, this project. Um, there is, um. Uh, finally got in touch with the engineer of those, those seven oh eight improvements, and there is new seismic concrete on the original building. Um, I think there, we might want to, um, we might, that might be a. More important use of these funds, and or there are, there are, there are seismic brands available specifically for public safety buildings, so we might have to.
Want to chat about that for a second?
Yeah, please.
Um, I recall the council chambers were finally adopted on the back end of city hall, so in this lawn area that is really kind of off the back of what is, I think, now a staff room. Uh, there was that, that whole area, um, I believe that was the final adopted plan, but I could be wrong. Um. And, um, I, I appreciate the fact that we are looking at, um, bringing in some funds to do some upgrades to the police department. But I do think it's going to be important to put it on everybody's radar that as we continue to invest in our police department. Prior to having done our study, our long, and I mean, it might not even be appropriate anymore, but. Our long scheduled study on police department funding, and how do we want to continue to invest, and is there, I mean, I. The, all of the ideas that have come out over the last five to six years have been, do we want to partner with another community for some of our services and all that stuff? Um, and, and, um. It seems, um, challenging to continue to consider just ongoing investments in the police department, wh- when we haven't done that. And whether or not the community, how the community wants to move forward with a, with a, a police department. And, um, I mean, it, just to assure this conversation in the record, uh, it's always been. Part of the conversation that whatever we do, it would be a community-driven discussion that would land in some sort of deciding mechanism. For the community, whether that goes to the ballot, or, uh, there's some sort of town hall and. Way of dealing with that, but I guess I just wonder if there. Is some place where we can make a decision about what is going to be the timing of that, and how much do we want to continue to invest in the, in the department? Um, while we're trying to wait for that process to happen, or do we even want to continue to have, I mean, I think we have to have some level of that discussion because. Uh, funding for the police department is, is a big decision, uh, if, and it's, it's, we've talked about. How that's gonna. Just start with cola and then assess from there. So. Uh, I, I want to, I want to share my thoughts with the council that I, that I've had about this, and, um. And just make sure that everybody is considering the fact that there is that assessment. As we bring in another two million dollars that might impact the dog park, like is that what we want to do? Without having the bigger conversation, council chairman.
Yeah, I just was trying to recall, I, I think this study did show up in a packet in the last couple of years or something. I don't recall that there was ever a robust conversation about the findings in that study, so I think, I think that's something that we should probably. Be doing, even if it is to talk about postponing the conversation, not having the conversation, or having the conversation.
I think we've been kicking that can down the road, keeping capacity, but.
Very well said.
Um. Counselor Buyers.
Yeah, I mean, we've had the elusive study session for the police study. On the back burner for years.
Years.
We need to take a look at it, yeah, I mean, especially considering what our finance director has showed us in our last budgeting cycle, um. We need to have that discussion.
I think one of the things that occurred to me when, when we're, when I first saw this funding comments, A, you know, it just reminds us that we want to, we want to see these applications before they get to us, although, my understanding is, is that one of those. Legislation that's just right around the corner, do you want part of this money or not, I get that, um, but, um, but the, the. The, I think one of the most important outcomes from one of those discussions is not just how do we sustain our, our police department in a healthy way moving forward, how do we want to do that? But then also, is, how do we want to invest in the police department? We have no capital improvement plan really in place for the. Um, so when we are looking at investments, what, what is the logic behind how we, how we, how we make those decisions? And, um, it's, it's hard when somebody's offering you two million dollars to say, no, thank you. Um, obviously, you're not going to do that, but then, and then sometimes you find yourself without a plan, like where can, where can we? Spend this, is this the best and highest use of this two million dollars? And that conversation didn't happen here, and I understand why, um, but like, to me, it's a two, kind of a two-pronged issue that I think we want to figure out moving forward, I. I don't think we're in a position to do that in this moment, but. Uh, having a plan on how we want to invest will make it easier when these windfalls do happen, that we have a logical direction to go in. So I don't know what comes out of this, except maybe just scheduling the thing.
That, well, and I would say I don't think there's a downside to making sure that a city-owned building is, um, seismically, uh, prepared.
I don't disagree with that, and I think that was the relief I heard when you, that was, when that last comment is that, or we can do seismic upgrading, and I, 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 I think that is a. A relief to the whole discussion, I don't disagree with that at all. So is there, uh, if, it, it sounds to me you have two. Just to address that question, Alex, you have two kind of ideas that you want, want to address, do you need any, uh? Have you got a preference, or you need any guidance on how we want to see the money spent, or?
I think, I think I, I think I just heard a pretty clear one.
Council chairman.
I'm wondering if the money could be used to kind of, instead of another meeting room, to create a senior center. Part of this. And I'm only half kidding, I'm only half kidding. But if it was like some sort of multi-purpose community or.
I think I remember hearing that the money has to be used for public safety, right?
Yes, and I, and I think the intent is very much for it to be a multi, a multi-use role. I, I'm not. If, I haven't had a moment to wrap my hand around whether that's okay for complimentary use or not.
It's just it's right next to the park, it's one of them, that's cool.
Um. I, I think, I, I think I've got what I need, um, I'll, I'll also say that, um. Tessa and the chief and I are definitely expecting, uh, at least the next. Let layer or onion, uh, layer of the onion about the long-term plan for police as part of. A, a public safety, the update discussion with the next meeting, so, um. We'll at least have a, at very least have a record evaluation for you all about what we think that, a route. For, uh, and location for that discussion.
For the, for the assessment discussion?
For the study.
Yeah.
Um, and, and just to be transparent, I, I think it may be, it may be simply, our, our recommendation may be that these are the findings. And you think that is sufficiently understood, and that we, if, if, if we're not pursuing a dramatic change. I don't know that you, you, you know, necessarily, uh, large public discussion, you know, to silver.
Yeah, I have to say, I read the study, and I don't see a lot of like. You know, this is the direction you should go in, I didn't, in fact, I didn't see any, but there was a lot of like. Stuff, but, and I don't think that, I don't actually think that study is going to get us very far down the road, but I'll leave that to the council to decide, but what I do. What I think the larger point is, is that we've long known that there's, uh, there's a really difficult decision that we need to make about how to sustain our police department, and it needs to go to the, you know, it'll have to go to the taxpayers at some point in time. And I think that's the actual conversation that we would, that we really want to have, I think the assessment set the table for that, but not in a very good way. Yeah, I, I wasn't very impressed with that report, to be honest with you, but. Um, anyway, okay, well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, and I think, I think that settles both of the pieces of this conversation, I appreciate it.
Good, and then two small. Good. And then two smaller items. Finance Director Delance is working on a Preserve Oregon grant that would address the foundation pieces that were out of budget scope for the awesome group. That's primarily doing a perimeter foundation for the 1927 building. Their, the application is due in May. It does require a one-to-one match. The maximum on the grant is $20,000. So that's potentially a rent of city funds in range of $20,000 to $25,000. To complete that project and through words and Tesla, not to get that grant. Another, another one that the chief asked me to flag, the police department has applied to the West Foundation for $4,000 for a couple dozen flag brackets and flags. That their, their thought was put them on Valley View and Town, and go a talent ad a few times a year. Now that will be a commitment of a few hours of public works, time to put them up, put those flags up and take them down a few times a year. So they've got a, we've got a presentation coming up in April. So that council is not supportive. We can save them your time.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Yes, flags, American flags, brackets and flags that would be funding to purchase brackets and to be able to display flags. Of the police department is supplied for funding.
Okay. I'd like to ask the council to move committee and commission reports to after 12.1. I'm going to ask us to relax the rule. I think we need a motion for that because we're, we're no longer at corrections or additions. So I, I would ask for a motion, council or? Actually, I think we can just have a motion to move the item, can't we? Yeah, yeah.
I move to move commission and committee reports to after 12.1, is that what?
Yeah.
Okay, to 12.1 after 12.1.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Your motion and a second to move agenda item 11 to after agenda item 12. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Chloe?
Yes.
Counselor Penamra?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Brownlow?
Yes.
Motion carries there.
Thank you. With that said, I do have a report from RV cog, from the last RV cog meeting that I'm hoping to get to. So anyway, let's take, let's get to 12.1, which is discussion of energy-related state legislation. Staff?
I think that's the time to.
Yeah, I'll just make this quick. So that was what Jennifer Hillheart was talking about. I, I had a little trouble hearing her on speaker, but yeah, so this is some legislation sponsored. Chief sponsor is Pam Marsh. Jeff Golden, our Senate State Senator is also a sponsor. Basically, it's trying to make things easier for residential customers, which is something that the Citizens Utility Board is, was created to do. There's, which I'm sure you all read in detail, it's only at page 151 of the packet. Some, some good stuff about, you know, not increasing rates, you know, in the middle of winter to kind of slow down the pace of rising, rising rates, rate hikes, and also to have some more transparency. There have been amendments, but I think, but what I'm told is it is very much still in the spirit, some reasonable amendments made from talking to some of the utility company, companies to make sure that they were cool with it. Sierra Club, So Can Road Climate Coalition Communities Color, Oregon Just Transitional Alliance. These are all folks that we very much align with, very much aligned with our values, have testified in support. So they just want a logo. So that would be, since this is other, I think the idea is that it would be on the agenda for the next meeting. Folks want to just authorize the logo now. I'm, I certainly wouldn't object to that, but it's, it's whatever's up to the council.
Counselor Chloe?
Is this just in regards to the Fair Energy Act, also the Power Act and then subsequent listed legislation or?
Yeah, the logo is just for the Fair Energy Act. But I mean, these are other bills that are kind of related and, and interesting that I think also align with some of those things, with what we support. And some of them are, are really fun, like getting junk out of race. But I, I didn't, I really didn't want to give this so much homework to this council, read all these bills and figure out whether you want to be funded. But it's kind of settled on the fair act.
Counsel Chloe?
Speaking for myself, I'm, I'm all for supporting the Fair Energy Act.
So is, what is just giving them a logo? I mean, is that just like, that's not like a formal endorsement or anything like?
It is a formal endorsement. They, they use the logo and they say, these are the folks that support this.
Yeah, but it doesn't come with language or any of that.
Right, right. It's, it's like, it's really easy. It's like, we agree with you, but we don't have to write a letter.
I mean, I think, given the fact that we don't need to produce anything for review and come back for a decision, we could probably just by consent, right? Dave, can we do that by consent or can we put it on the next agenda?
No, need to put it on the next agenda. You can do it by motion.
Okay. I move to authorize the mayor or the city manager, whoever, to, to provide the city of talent logo to the to, in support of the Fair Energy Act.
Second.
First motion and a second to authorize the city manager to provide the logo for the Fair Energy Act. Is there any discussion? Hearing them, roll call, please.
Counselor Chloe?
Yes.
Counselor Penamra?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Prime though?
Yes.
Motion carries there.
Thank you. Counselor Byers?
I just wanted to thank Counselor Penamra for all of the great links. So I could feel like I had read as much as possible about this in advance. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also say thank you and then mention that we typically put things on other for the intention of putting it on a future agenda item. But I think, you know, there are some lower level decisions that we can go ahead and move on other, and I appreciate hearing that tonight. But if there was a need for deeper discussion or, or more consideration on different language, we would definitely be within that putting it up. So in other words, I try to avoid decision-making at that point, but. Counselor Penamra?
Just really quickly, because we're running out of time. Sometimes they say like, this legislation is here just to get its feet wet. We know it's not going to pass. It will happen next time. So in a way, the time that you invest in learning about some of these things pays off. Over the next several years in the state legislature, you can say, I know all about this, Bill. I've already studied it. But anyway.
Right. All right. So the next item then is going to be commission and committee reports. Let's start on your end.
Yeah.
Counselor Chloe?
Urban Forestry met last week. As you heard, Arbor Day is this Saturday, nine to noon. Could be planting 10 trees at Chuck Roberts Park and fixing some irrigation, mulching, fertilizing, all that kind of stuff. Say this every time, but we're almost done with the master plan soon. New member Frank's coming on, so that's great. And then Pierre, we're meeting tomorrow. Got 13 applications. Think they should be all scored. And then I think next week we're meeting again and having a public meeting and bringing some of the applicants forward to present. So it'll be fun.
Counselor Penamra?
Right. RVNPO met yesterday and hasn't raised its dues of member jurisdictions for like decade or decades. Anyway, they voted to do that. And so talents pre, based on population, 20, raised it to 25 cents person. Talents used to be 830, oh, sorry, yeah, $836 is now 1603 for the year. So, so those, those will be going into effect. The only other interesting thing was the RVNPO has like three committees. There's the policy committee, which is the electeds. There is the technical advisory committee, which are the technical planning people who figure things out for us. And then there's the public advisory committee, which is supposed to be just folks from the community. And it's really, really under, underfilled. There's just not enough folks willing to do it. Found out that Eagle Point actually appoints members of their council to go to that. So I thought that's a great way to volunteer, volunteer people to, and fill the ranks of the public advisory committees. So if anybody is interested in do that, you could learn all about federal funding of transportation projects.
Stuff, but it's necessary. All right, Counselor Medina?
All right. I went to the first together for talent committee. They're pretty nice, awful people. Yeah, so I did a lot of just like watching them. My first time there. But what they talked about was like the March emergency preparedness, get ready road workshop was rescheduled. This is the third time, I think. It's going to be April 30th, the third time to charm from six to eight. But the good news is people are still very excited for it. So the last time that was canceled is because the, they were afraid that was going to be like inclement weather again. It's going to be harsh. But I guess it ended up being like really nice weather and 12 people showed up hoping it would be there. So it's kind of nice, even though they announced like it was going to be rescheduled. So it's kind of nice to know there's that kind of interest in the community for this. And we talked about the recycling event, kind of on the day of May 17th for it. And looking to, they said they need about 17 to 20 volunteers and just kind of time reminding vendors more often to go about when that's happening and all that stuff. And then we talked about an editorial for the May town, we're going to review. And then the senior center were there and they were talking about a lot, like just think that they were upcoming, what they've been doing. They talked about, I didn't know they had a Facebook group, but I checked that out and that was pretty good to get that kind of information. It's a part of the community that I never see, but it's meant to be some people are for that team, senior in our community and all that stuff. Oh, yeah. So once, one question that came up was about the volunteers, especially for the recycling event and the liability. With like what the insurance concern is, they wanted me to ask about that. And they wanted, like they pointed out, but they've never been a concern or any incident, but you know, they wanted me to bring that to council and just kind of like that question.
You have to fill out paperwork, right, Alex?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a, well, I shouldn't say just, it's a, it's a, it's a waiver. And it's acknowledging that, that there is some risk in what they're living in, that they're not going to see the city. You know, they're suffering injury while doing, it's a strain of their back, right? They're, they're out there potentially lifting heavy objects, which, we want it to be clear that that's how that is.
Counselor Penamra?
We had heard some concerns, and I don't know Hector, if this was yours or Nicole's about like it becoming, it seeming more difficult than it was in the past, with the insurance company being a little bit more difficult. And I've talked to other nonprofits, you're nodding that, that, that there is something going on with insurance company around these kinds of, you know, with, with volunteers. Has the situation changed?
Can I, can I, there's some feedback on that? I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but I saw the presentation. I was in that presentation with people who have seen it for the first time. And I didn't see much change at all, that we've been, and we've had the same process for years. It's just that most of the people don't even know about that process. So it alarmed a lot of people. And there was a lot of talk afterward, but I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I recognized almost everything that she said. And, and, and I think it still boils down to the waiver form, right?
Well, it's more than the waiver. And I'm not up to speed on this, so I probably need to come back to you on it, but the CIS is not covering volunteers. We have most recently been paying separately to provide insurance for our volunteers. You still need to file a waiver and whatnot, but there's a question of can we get the insurance and it would cost? So I need to come back to you. There are some changes there. It's not in the CIS side of things. It's in ours separately. When I, I, I was looking today of whether there's been changes in terms of more suits or successful suits or something that's driving this. What's the biggest change for us as a city is specifically our, our agent of record who supports us in, in both with CIS and these other policies really flagged it as an area of concern of theirs that they want to really help us, encourage us to, to, to tighten up a little bit. And they're not dramatically different. It's not a dramatically different form, but I think it's just more consistency in using it and making sure that we're not, you know, we're, that we're, that we're doing what we intend to do.
Yeah, kind of, isn't it like we're, that we're tightening up the process of what we've kind of always done?
Of, of what we've always intended.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I got from it. It's like, oh, it's not different. It's just that we haven't been doing it as well in recent past. Counselor Chloe?
Yeah, just to understand, that's the conversation about the workers' comp that we have for employees now also covering volunteers. It did, at least to me, feel like it seemed like there was a very high level of expectation for volunteers in the same way that you would have for employees where like the class of activity they might be doing, it'd be tracked down to the hour, and we had to be supervised by staff at all times. So it did, and maybe that's why, like you're saying, some people in that presentation, like, oh God, we can't do anything. That's a little bit how it felt to me, but.
I mean, it may have, but like I said, I've seen that presentation before and it didn't look different to me at all. It's like, and I mean, I remember we used to have clipboards out there and everybody had to sign a clipboard and you had to put in the hours. And it was all the track, all of that stuff. So, and I think you've done, you've done some of that before, Hector. So yeah, it just, I, I, I realize it sounded alarming for the first time, but I've seen it and it didn't look different to me, but I just want to say that.
And if I can just make sure to clarify, the workers' comp is being extended by the city to the council and to the commissions. It not, it's nobody beyond, I, I think currently maybe one or two bodies beyond that. But our, our last discussion with our agent of record, we were thinking about that, that was probably the best place to, to draw the line as in part because of the level of record keeping that's necessary to, to effectively do that.
Hey, thank you. And it's good that that information, it would be good as part of an annual, like, you know, if you're reviewing the bylaws, reviewing this volunteer requirements as well. Counselor Byers?
It's 9:21. Should we vote to extend the meeting?
Sure.
I move to extend this meeting as needed.
Second, we have a motion and a second to extend the meeting as needed till 10 p.m. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Chloe?
Yes.
Counselor Penamra?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Prime Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries there.
Yeah, my report is pretty short, so maybe we can get moving through here. So I had the meeting with RV cog. I'm the city's representative as a member of RV cog's board. And so they gave the presentation of the area agency on aging for 2025, 2029 as required by law that they do a periodic update. So they just provided that and it was a reading and good discussion. We talked, we approved that plan. Also, they did appointments for the budget committee. And I am now on the budget committee for this cycle. Let's see, the main, I think the main, and we had a, a director's report, but the main kind of topic. Let's see, the main, I think the main, and we had a director's report, but the main kind of topic was the food and friends and the the space that Food and Friends has, has been using all these years to prepare their food was the report that we got. So this was the report I got from RV cog. I'm just saying that this is what they said. That that space was donated by Allsworth family originally and that it was for the purpose of preparing food for Food and Friends. And that they were concerned by the fact that they were provided notice to vacate without any previous discussion, without any, am I getting this right? Yeah, without any previous discussion. And so they, they have decided, the board decided, we took a vote on that our response is going to be, to provide them with pushback, a letter of pushback and that we, I think we wrote a resolution.
Resolution, yeah.
We voted on a resolution that says not so fast and and that, that, that they may not be, they may not be, I, I'm trying to be careful to choose the right words, but they may not be, it may not be the right thing that they're able to do to just evict Food and Friends. So particularly without any previous warning. So that is, they are preparing a response and I think they'll probably see it in the papers and enough and and I'll get back to you on it, but they're not going to take it sitting down. And I, for one, based on the information I was provided that in that meeting, supported the, the resolution. Did you want to add? You were there.
Yeah, I was there for the area plan, which the senior advisory council, they asked us to attend, so really happy to see that, that pass. Yeah, I think there, there was, there were some harsh words spoken there. It's an interesting listen. I think people forget these are recorded. And they're like, let me tell you, you think that's bad. So I would advise any newspaper to listen to that. You get some juicy quotes. But yeah, I think there, there was the concern, you know, Anne Marie, who's been our HR person and is very, you know, wants to be very collaborative, was concerned about the way it was, you know, conveyed, just a certified letter. And they are desperately looking around for space. And I, and I think I remember them talking about if they could just get a warehouse and just fit it out to their needs. Might have been in one of the SAC meetings and not the RV cog meeting, but I, I seem to remember that, you know, they're looking for something very close to the freeway. Anyway, it's not, it's not a restaurant kitchen. That will not work for them. And it's, it's going to, you know, and there's emergency, there is a, there is a Plan B and a Plan C. But the seniors in our, in the Rogue Valley are, are going to not have the level of food service that they've had up until now, which is, which is really concerning.
Well, I think if the assertions of RV cog, that RV cog made about the purpose of that building, as, as it was originally contributed to the community, will have interesting ramifications. And I, I just want to say that we might differ a little bit on, I, I got the impression after that resolution that they, they're going to be more pushing back than looking, so.
Well, can I just say with the two attorneys on RV cog, they certainly had the ideas. Not to say anybody's going to sue anyone, you know.
But. That newspaper looked for the attorney's day. They were rowdy.
Yeah.
Council Pesezal. Well, so Planning Commission didn't meet. Yeah, no, they didn't. Yeah, it was canceled. Okay. Council Byers?
Parks Commission is next Wednesday, so I'll report out about that. Next regular meeting. Tomorrow though, is the Citizens Advisory Group meeting with Gridline. And we've got everyone showing up. I had a little preliminary conversation with Matt from the line today, just making sure everything's, that, that we've got an understanding of what is being discussed for this Citizens Advisory Committee meeting versus the Parks Commission meeting.
So, questions?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, so I heard from a constituent, I heard from another constituent, that they thought that there had been some, some spraying glass, glass paint around the skate park, that apparently there was a sign or something that there had been some of that spraying. And I don't remember, I know that we lifted those, you know, the, the no, the requirements in our, in our plan just for those, you know, like the rain carrying, very limited, right? But not for the skate park. Anyway, I, so the two questions is, I didn't miss that, right? And, and the other thing is, do you know anything? Does anybody know?
I don't know anything about that.
Going on? Okay, it might have been a misunderstanding or, but yeah, I just wanted to get that clear.
Can I ask you? So the purpose of that group was to provide the contractor with his need for community input from stakeholders per his contract. So did the contractor indicate to you that he had, he had things he was going to be looking for or questions he's going to be asking?
Actually, someone on his team grew up in Talent and grew up skateboarding in that park. I believe her name is Megan. And so she had especially just a couple ideas that were minor improvements because he's very aware, one, that this is a restoration and repair project. And also limited by budget. He was like, you know, the budget that we have is for repairing, not for like doing wild changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But she did have a couple ideas she wanted to ask the Citizens Advisory Committee about and just get their thoughts on everything.
Council Perry Miller. I, I almost called you Penamra, so.
So CPAC actually hasn't met yet. They're, they're going to meet on Monday, so I don't have a report yet.
Okay. Hey, can I ask a quick question? So we had a project on the Riparian, on the Wagner, Wagner Creek, right, not the Riparian, but the Wagner Creek from Talent Avenue through Jo, to Joseph Park, if you can imagine that. There was, we had that, that project that was paid for by one of our grants.
About the fuels reduction grant?
Yeah, the fuel reduction grant. And my understanding was it got put on hold because of the nesting.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say that my recollection of it is it got, it got slowed down by the original complaint prior to the nesting, way prior to the nesting was, it's gonna, if you cut down your stuff, my yard's going to be, right? And then that turned into, I have enough time with buying, now it's nesting. But that's still a fuel fuse up into the west side of our community. Are we going to get back to that project? So like, the reason I'm asking is because what I recall was, oh, we can't spend that, once that, I think December, this was going to be spent up or something like that. We had to spend it by December.
Yeah, I actually talked to our RV cog manager today. Or yesterday.
Peter.
About, yeah, about this. And so our next step is to get a good idea from the contractor of exactly how much work is out there that needs to be done. It, it's probably about five, $8,000 worth of survey work. And so my plan is to do some kind of consideration of, is, is it worth spending that much money to do the survey work? And how, how much, how much fuel reduction do we get for that? But there's definitely time to do it. What we would do if we're, if we are moving forward, we get this, we could get the survey done while we're waiting for nesting season to end. And when nesting season ends in September.
Yes. After September, okay. Councilor Colley?
Yeah, just, I think you got it, but just to throw my two cents in there since I helped review the applications for the contractor for that project. Based on like the amount of acreage that they, you know, were slated to treat and the amount of money that was put into that project, there's probably enough money to do survey work and easily complete the field production, but the contractor will obviously have a good sense of that. But I'm fairly confident that that will happen.
Just reporting out from the Black Parks Commission meeting, the commissioners were asking Gao Ying about this and Gao Ying was also very confident that there would be quite, there would be ample funds to finish the project and do the additional survey.
The, the only caveat that I would make is, my understanding is the survey work itself is not reimbursable under the agreement. So it is, you know, it's a different color of money.
Why are we doing survey work?
Uh, I, I think at the, at the adjacent property owner's request.
That we survey our own property?
That we survey their property line.
Oh, that we serve their pro, okay, that, I get it.
There was feedback that blackberries were being removed from their property.
From their property. Okay, I remember now, but I just didn't connect the dots to the survey. Okay. That answers my question. I just, I guess because you're fairly new and, but I'm sure have some information about this, that is, that was, I haven't seen it recently, but that was an extraordinary mess back there. Like it was, like the blackberries were literally grown up above the bridge and on Talent Avenue. It's just horrible. And I know that while there is a neighbor back there that feels strongly that he doesn't want the blackberries cut on his property, I also know a bunch of neighbors that are really worried about that as a fire hazard for their neighborhood. And so I'm glad to hear that we can still move forward. And if we can get an occasional update as it starts to move forward, that would be really good.
Absolutely. That's great info.
And if, you know, we need to have more input from those neighbors, I'd be happy to generate that. More to, to get that discussion going. Okay, that's it, I think, for us tonight. And we're going to get out of here with only using three minutes of that abstention. Not so fast.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, if we could do it reasonably quickly, Hector, thank you very much for putting this all together. So we've got extensive calendar of budget meetings. So that's all laid out here. In terms of the upcoming topics, April 16th, my plan is to have a joint council tourist study session focused on the potential public benefits from the Gateway Project. And that, that session was in part stimulated by a request for, by the Talent Business Alliance to present to, to that body. And on the 16th, the regular council meeting, a couple, an old business item that should be listed here would be the next step on the Talent and Resource Center discussion from tonight, hopefully wrap at least that up for, for now. I think we may want a report on the recycling event proposal. So also can we apprise to that and approve or what you all want that event to look like. And we plan on presenting inflation adjustment to the public safety fee. The review of the findings of the railroad district study. And at the middle, we have a cleanup of the stormwater rate increase. And hopefully we'll potentially also a system development charge update. We are double checking. We have like notices of appropriate public care to, to do that. And there, there, there's further topics out there. Obviously, we've got a lot, a lot of work that ahead. I am, I have done preliminary work and have a good idea about the training and lodging task. So I put that down. We have a schedule.
Terrific. I'm wondering if we can get any information looking ahead on what is our balance in our CET fund? And what is our balance in our diesel tax fund?
Yep. And thank you for, you know, me, and all of me actually look at this as well. One thing that I really like input from council on is the next discussion about self-storage and gas station regulation. Whether you prefer that go to the Planning Commission for their discussion first, or if you'd like a joint session on that, or what, what your preference would be.
Council, Council Penamra?
Yeah, I think it's easiest just to go straight to planning. I don't, I don't think there's much to discuss. I think we're all on the same page for that. I'm perfectly comfortable with saying planning, make it so.
I think that they can't make it so. They can make a recommendation.
Well, yeah, we figure it out.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, okay. Anything else? All right, set the whole agenda. We are adjourning at 9:37.